Good evening. My name is Brian Hagerty. I'm the Chair of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. I want to welcome everyone to this evening's board meeting. Before we start, can everyone please rise so we can do the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as a [inaudible].
Okay. And also, before we get started, I know Memorial Day was Monday, but the El Paso Community College started with all the Vietnam vets coming back from Vietnam. So I just want to take a moment of silence for all the vets that didn't make it home. So just have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Bell, call the roll, please.
Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Najera.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Mrs. Moy.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hagerty.
Here.
Item 1.4, approval of minutes, there is none. Item 1.5, welcome to guests and staff members. Item 1.6, open forum, there is none. And we will move to item 1, to section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business, for the swearing in of our new elected trustees. Item 1.9.1, the Board of Trustees will conduct the official swearing-in and administer the oath of office to the newly elected members of the Board of Trustees in District 4, District 5, and District 6.
Okay.
Mr. President and members of our trustees, of our Board of Trustees, I'm very honored to be administering the oath of two of your new members of your Board. You know, as you know, this is like coming home to me. I'm getting a little teary as I'm speaking. This is such a wonderful institution, and to know that all of you as dedicated public servants have dedicated so much time and effort to be part of this institution, I'm just very honored to be here, to come home, and to complete you as a Board. So I'd like to first call on Mr. Mendez, Mr. Jesus Mendez, if you could please approach.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mendez, how are you? Good, thank you.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jesus Mendez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of El Paso Community College.
Of El Paso Community College.
Trustee for District 4.
Trustee for District 4.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitutions and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I just need you to sign on the dotted line. Thank you. Congratulations. I'd now ask that Ms. Diana Yadira Moy, please approach. Okay, how are you?
I am well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Please raise your right hand and state your name. I mean, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Diana Yadira Moy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of El Paso Community College District.
Of El Paso Community College District 6.
Trustee for District 6.
Trustee for District 6.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I had shared with them, if I could have some moments to share, just some gratitude. I promise I won't, I won't take very long. Those that know me know that I can't keep things short, especially when I'm speaking from the heart. So this evening, I just want to share that it's not about me being sworn into a position, it's about honoring the people and the path that brought me here. And I'd like to begin by sharing a few words. And I'm very passionate, so that's why you hear my voice breaking, but I strongly believe in education and the community and what EPCC has done and the family that is here to support me. But first, my incredible husband, thank you. You've been more than a partner, you've been a sounding board, my steady hand and the quiet strength that keeps everything moving forward with pace, when the pace gets overwhelming. Your ability to listen to clarity and to offer thoughtful perspective has helped me to see things more clearly. You're not just beside me, but you're in it with me. I'm so grateful for the friendship, the laughter, and your unwavering support. To our sweet son, mi campeón, being a boy mom is one of the greatest joys of my life. He is full of kindness, silliness, and a pure heart. Just the right blend of joy and goofiness that keeps me grounded and reminds me not to take life too seriously. He helps others, he lifts spirits, and he shows me what happiness looks like in motion. He's my daily reminder of why this work matters and the kind of future we're building, one full of compassion, curiosity, and love. Now, I come from a single mother household, raised by a woman who gave everything. She instilled in me the unshakable belief that education opens doors, not for recognition, but to serve, to grow, and to give without expecting anything in return. One of the poems that shaped me deeply growing up was "La mamá más mala del mundo," the worst, meanest mom in the world. As a child, I didn't understand it. I only saw tough love in the many no's. But now I realize it was about strength, sacrifice, and love in its most powerful form. To my mom, thank you for being la mamá más mala del mundo. You taught me what it means to lead with heart and with purpose. To my sister and RKO, my extended family, you have surrounded me with love, encouragement through every step, and your belief in me means more than words can say. And to my lifelong friends, thank you for being here and thank you for being the ones that I can always count on, to show up, to cheer, to remind me of who I am, and again for being here today. And to a dear friend, you know who you are. Thank you for planting that seed that could, that seed that reiterated that I could serve in this role. You encouraged me to step forward, believed in my voice, and walked with me every step of the way. So as someone who has served in public education, I've always led with a servant's heart. And now I bring the same heart to this Board, and for me, this role is not a title, it's an extension of my calling to teach, to guide, and to empower others through education. I deeply believe in Dr. Serata's vision for El Paso Community College. His leadership has rooted in access, equity, and excellence, and I'm honored to join this Board made up of our trustees who have given so much, not only for their knowledge, but for the heart, and I look forward to learning from you and contributing alongside you. Lifelong learning doesn't stop at a degree. It happens every day in our homes, in our workplaces, and in our lives, and I see this position as a way to educate not just in the classroom, but throughout our community, to shine a light on the incredible things EPCC is doing and to help it grow and impact even further. As Ralph Waldo Emerson once wrote, "Do not follow where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." I'm ready to carve new trails, ones that connect our students to opportunity, our educators to support, and our community to the power of education. Thank you to the community for trusting me. I'm honored to serve, and I can't wait to get back to work. I know I said I would keep it short, but I'm very passionate. Thank you.
Judge, how are you? I saw you.
Can I be excused?
Yes, you can. Good to see you, Judge. Okay, now we're going to swear in the second longest trustee at the community college. Dr. Graham, come down, please. Okay, you ready?
You're supposed to congratulate me.
Congratulations. I'm congratulating you for putting up with me for so many years. That's a job in itself.
A challenge.
All right. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carmen Olivas Graham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the El Paso Community College District Trustee, District 5.
Of the Community College District Trustee, District 5.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You stay with me for another six years. Want to say anything?
Just thank you to my constituents that voted, or anyone that carried me forth a few years ago, when I only won by four votes, and then later by seven. And I don't even, I didn't even look at the votes this time, I just figured it's going to happen. But I'm very encouraged with the Board of Trustees that we have at EPCC. I think compared to other Boards, we're an exemplary Board in our community, and we are very happy that we've got people joining us that share the vision and the laser focus attention to all that we are going to provide for students in the coming years. And yes, I'll put up with Judge Hagerty. We've been together, I think, what, 19 years? Something like that?
Forever.
So thank you all for being here and supporters.
their families and take some pictures. So we're going to take a few minutes to take a break. So don't be so quiet. Congratulate them.
All right, we're back in section, I'm sorry. We're back on, Ms. Ma'am. Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Mr. Daniel Graves, Partner Advisory of Weaver and Tidwell LLP, will present the results of their risk assessment to include the audit plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I do have a brief presentation, I'll try and keep it brief, I know you guys have a lot tonight, but I do want to present to you our risk assessment process. It covers quite a few things, so I'll do a quick introduction, talk about our approach, the purpose of the risk assessment, what we did through our planning stages, and then ultimately resulting in our proposed four-year plan that I'd like to present to you. So in our introduction here, I just wanted to, there's a lot on this slide, I know you probably have it in your materials, so I'm not going to read it all, but the risk assessment was a facilitated risk assessment, and that's really the point of this slide. We didn't come in as a third party to the college and say, "We know what your risks are, we're going to assess it." We actually had a independent, objective viewpoint where we facilitated this through key leadership in the college who participated in the risk assessment, and so wanted you to know that, that this isn't just ours, but this is our way to facilitate your own internal risk assessment, and then we helped validate that and then develop the internal audit plan from that. So the purpose of the whole risk assessment process really ultimately is to look at inherent risks of the college and develop a internal audit plan. And so this is a snapshot of what risk is when we did the risk assessment, so for this fiscal year, we looked at a, the inherent risk, we'll talk more about that later, we took a multi-year approach into the overall internal audit plan, we factored in college time and resources, and really looked at the most influential risks that are here and present at the college through all the significant activities that take place, just because you exist and choose to pursue some of the things you pursue as an organization. So the risk assessment in this graphic is really, what's included is in the box in this one graphic. So we started with risk identification, conducted the risk assessment, then we used the, developed the internal audit plan, the last piece of that is part of the internal audit function, which is the ultimate monitoring, which we would do once the plan's approved. Risk is, we're looking at is any event that has a potential to negatively impact the achievement of the college's objectives. And so when we talk about those, we talk about inherent versus residual risk, and so this is a concept we talked a lot about when we did our risk assessment meeting. It's a little bit foreign to most people, but it is a common way for an internal audit practice to assess risk. So inherent risk is really the risk in an uncontrolled state versus residual risk, which considers internal controls. And so what you see in the risk assessment, there's several things in the red, in the high, but that is because it's an inherent risk assessment, not residual. And so one easy way to think about it is, when we're talking through the risk assessment, we were talking with the President and the Cabinet members, and we said, you know, they said, "Well, this is low risk because we have policies and procedures and we do monitoring." And I said, "Well, you do policies and have procedures and perform monitoring, because you have a higher inherent risk, what you're talking about is residual risk." And so that is something that I just wanted you to keep in mind, from an internal audit perspective, we base the plan on inherent risk, we then perform internal audit procedures to validate and provide assurance that the confidence you have in the residual risk is accurate, so that we confirm all the controls, the policies, procedures, that they're operating effectively, so that you can have confidence then in your residual risk. Because it's a facilitated risk assessment, you'll see here, these are all the members who participated in the risk assessment. These individuals assisted us in providing insight into the influential risk categories, what risks we considered as part of the risk assessment, the, all the significant activities that we put together, they participated in the forum where we performed the risk rating. Then there were some assistance and interpretation of some of the risk assessment results, and we, when we talked about the internal audit plan, we got some background on college monitoring activities. And so the risks that we included, again, there's a lot on this page, but we broke them down, we had about, we, Weaver, has a bank of about 17 different risk categories, and you'll see many of them listed here, we combined several of them to come up with five key risk groups, starting with financial, economic, and fraud risks, so those were three different categories that we combined and defined as one risk group. Operations, compliance, and human capital, so this has a lot to do with scalable processes and having the right people in the right places to do those activities. Student experience is the next, so that's really your customer service, what are we doing, you know, this is one of the big ones, right? Because that's what we're here for, is to give the students the educational experience that they need. The next is risk, sorry, information technology risk, because that has a whole lot in it. That's cybersecurity, that's basic blocking and tackling of also information technology functions, that's support dependence on IT. And then finally, we have reputation and strategic risk, and so that's your headline risk. What are we worried about hitting on, you know, the newspaper front page? And then are we effective strategically? So those were the five main risk categories that we included, and we assessed these five categories through the significant activities. And so we looked at the basic internal, basic activities that any organization has, such as purchasing, human resources, basic IT, financial reporting, some, and payroll, those are the five basic that almost any organization has. But then we looked at all the different activities, all the different programs, and all the different things that a community college has to do because they exist and because they undertake some of the goals and missions that they do. And we defined all of those with the risk assessment leadership team. We broke those out into major categories, and then further defined each one of those into subcategories below the major categories. And so we ended up with 54 major categories. And so we assessed those five risk categories across all 54 of these significant activities, and below each one of these 54, we further defined what those are. We then conducted a risk assessment forum where we looked at the probability and impact of those five risk categories across those 54 different significant activities. Once that was done, we went back, we did some basic math, and then looked at some of the ratings and really assessed them from a qualitative standpoint. We made some adjustments, we consulted with management in making those, and then that resulted in what we have is a risk assessment, a risk-rated internal audit universe, which is just a really internal audit auditor way of saying, you know, we finished with it and this is what it looks like. And so this is your risk-rated practice from high to low for the top 37, and you'll see it's on a one to four scale, one being low, four being high. Again, we have, you know, almost 20 that are red and high, but this is an inherent risk basis, not a residual risk basis. I just want to remind everyone of that, because this is really how we're going to now, this is what we now use to plan for our internal audits, the long-term internal audit practice. And we've got another, you know, kind of pretty way to display it, these numbers here correspond to the 54 listed that you already have seen, so that maps out. The internal audit plan, we looked at it from a lot of different ways, we really, in doing that, we considered the risk ratings, what was high, what was low, any emerging risks or risks that have recently changed, we wanted to look at those as those creep up. Also, we looked at the timing audit, timing of the audits in a multi-year approach. Anytime we do audits, we want to make sure that we're not overloading any one area of the college with repeated audits year after year, because we also have follow-up procedures. And so any mature internal audit function, once you perform an audit, you follow up on it the next year to make sure that those items have been resolved, and so we've included that as well. We put together a four-year plan that you can see from a strategic timeline, those audits are structured so that they build on one another from year to year. It also considers the time that the audit, that the departments within the college would need to respond to audit requests as well as remediate findings. And so when, in this plan, we're only asking for you to approve year one, and the reason we ask for that, we present all four years because we want you to see the structured, layered, and methodical approach that we've put together, but we will reassess and refresh the risk assessment in a much lighter way than we did this year. We'll do that every year and reassess the internal audit plan and say, "Does this make sense for where we're at today?" And so what you saw was a snapshot of fiscal year 2025, we will refresh that every year, and you'll see it again for '26, '27, and so on. So in doing that, we're recommending that we perform an internal audit over financial aid. And you'll see in the planned summary procedures, that will include everything from institutional financial aid, the student success, endowment scholarships, state and federal, veterans affairs, Pell requirements, local tuition waivers, discounts, those are all areas that will be considered when we scope that. We also have included in here an institutional effectiveness and reporting advisory engagement and advisory audit. And so there's a little bit different between an internal audit and an advisory audit, and advisory is more consultative in nature, the Institute of Internal Audit Standards allow for internal auditors to work in a consultative capacity. And what we plan and what we've discussed with management here, and they've asked us to include this, is really doing some advising and consulting around the HB8 reporting and data collection. We've done this at a couple other community colleges in Texas, and it's been a very good success for those clients, and so that's really where this is centered, and what we intend to spend that time on is really around the HB8 reporting with some of the newer changes that are occurring through this legislative session, we've, that's what we would cover here. We also perform follow-ups on the SB17 compliance audit that we perform, just to see the few areas that we had recommendations on were addressed, and then we have just, as part of the other plan, we have basic project management, a risk assessment update, internal audit plan, and then there's an annual internal audit report that we will also file. You will see that later again this year, because we'll complete one for this year. The Texas Internal Audit Act has an annual reporting requirement that is a summary report of all the activity. The guidance for that comes out in August, and so we've included that on all the successive plans. So that's our proposed plan for fiscal '26. For '27, we're recommending an information technology services audit. We've, if you look back, and I'm not going to flip to give everybody whiplash on the slides, but information technology services was our number-one risk-rated activity, and information security was number two. So we're recommending information technology in our second year of our internal audit plan, one to give them a year's notice of this is coming in '27, so that we can be prepared. But then also, when we do this, there's a lot in this, and we're recommending it before information security, because this is the basic blocking and tackling and the core backbone of the central nervous system of the college's communication system, but it is also a basic building block for information security. This will have a few light security items in it, you'll see in here, things like user provisioning, some basic security, but there will be a much deeper security audit, is what we've recommended in year four. This also includes follow-ups and the regular annual requirements of the audit report and the risk assessment refresh. '28, we've proposed safety and security. Again, we've not proposed that we do information technology and then information security back-to-back because of remediation and planned follow-ups, so we'll have, we would expect that there would be follow-up in 2028, and so it would be a lighter touch for the IT department, where we would look at safety and security across the college, you can see all the areas that would be potentially included in that. And then as, in the final year for our four-year plan, we've recommended information security, again, with all the other annual requirements. So from a four-year approach, it really looks at financial aid, HB8 reporting, information technology, safety, security, and then information security. But again, we're only asking for the fiscal year 2026 plan to be approved, because we will refresh this and re-present the multi-year next year as well. Any questions?
Would you remind me again what HVA stands for?
House Bill 8, House Bill, House Bill 8, and that was the House Bill, and Dr. Serata, you may want to add on that. So we're recommending information technology in our second year of our internal audit plan, one to give them a year's notice of this is coming in twenty-seven so that we can be prepared. But then also, when we do this, there's a lot in this, and we're recommending it before information security, because this is the basic blocking and tackling and the core backbone of the central nervous system of the college's communication system, but it is also a basic building block for information security. This will have a few light security items in it. You'll see in here, things like user provisioning, some basic security. But there will be a much deeper security audit, is what we've recommended in year four. This also includes follow-ups and the regular annual requirements of the audit report and the risk assessment refresh. Twenty-eight, we've proposed safety and security. Again, we've not proposed that we do information technology and then information security back-to-back because of remediation and planned follow-ups. So we'll have, we would expect that there would be follow-up in 2028. And so it would be a lighter touch for the IT department, where we would look at safety and security across the college. You can see all the areas that would be potentially included in that. And then in the final year for our four-year plan, we've recommended information security, again, with all the other annual requirements. So from a four-year approach, it really looks at financial aid, HBA reporting, information technology, safety, security, and then information security. But again, we're only asking for the fiscal year 2026 plan to be approved, because we will refresh this and re-present the multi-year next year as well. Any questions?
Would you remind me again what HVA stands for?
House Bill Eight. House Bill Eight. And that was the House Bill. And Dr. Serrata, you may want to...
Yeah, Ms. Exer.
No, I just didn't understand what the...
Yeah, House, got it. House Bill Eight. House Bill Eight approved in the 2023 session.
Now, it looks to me that when you put this risk assessment, you took the areas and functions, and you sliced and diced, and you came up and rated everything one to four. Okay? Was this an individual aggregation without consultation? Was it a group meeting? Did they all get together and would do this? Or do, you know, when you go back, yeah, okay. Did the participants then individually rate this? So everybody rated their own one-to-four rating, and then this is the average? Or once, how did that work? Or did you all get together and agree, or not agree, discuss?
That's a great question. So we did not average. What we did is we gave them a packet, and we gave the risk assessment team homework. So your auditor gave everybody homework, which is really fun to do in an educational environment. We asked them to go through their areas and rank them themselves, one to four. We gave them a set of instructions. Then we all met. We all sat in a room for, I think, almost five hours and went through this together and arrived at a consensus. And so we didn't average, because if one person chooses one and one person chooses four, it averages out, and you don't really get a true rating. So we actually had very active discussion over these different probability and impact ratings that were given and arrived at a consensus with that risk assessment team. Again, it was, we facilitated that discussion. They arrived at these ratings. And then we helped, you know, vet them out and say, does that really make sense based on what we know and what we've seen at other institutions?
So each participant came up with a number one to four?
Yes, sir.
And then you took what, all the participants, and then averaged them? Is that how that worked?
No.
You come up with three-point-eight-one. How'd you get three-point-eight-one?
Well, there was no, so the five major columns, so everything under financial, economic, and fraud, we have a probability rating of four and an impact rating of four for the first one. So we went and we gave all of those. Then the probability subtotal and the impact subtotal, those are averages of all the other scores put together.
Okay, so that's where the averaging comes in?
Yes, sir. That's where the mathematics comes in.
But the group, but the group then agreed that, yeah, as a group, that this area is a four?
Correct.
Okay. And so it was a group consensus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now who's the group? Was that the staff, the members that you identified on that slide?
Yes. This group here. Yes, sir. So we made sure that we had representation from all areas of the college and tried to have a really broad, holistic look of everyone who could participate. So again, we didn't, we didn't come in and say, we know what your risks are, or here's your risk ratings. We said, this is, this is the concept of risk rating. This is the concept of the risk assessment. We led that, facilitated it. And then honestly, when there were ratings that were given that I didn't think made sense, it's our job to play devil's advocate and ask questions. And that's what facilitated the discussion to arrive at the consensus scores.
So, okay, it's a consensus on individual. Okay, I understand.
Sir, I have a question, or several. When you address the audits, who does the timely audits? Is that your job, or is that the job of the cabinet?
Can you ask that in a different way?
Yes. You said that there will be ongoing audits?
Yes.
Every year, one year, next year, next year? And who's responsible for those audits? Is that something we hire you all to do, or is that something the college leadership?
Yes, that was in the request for proposal. We proposed on that to be the internal auditor. I believe it's a five-year contract, or one year plus multiple renewals. And so, yes, that would be us performing those audits.
And is there an advantage to, say, for example, the college going for the, because we approve one year at a time, right? Is there an advantage to approve all the years together?
You could do that, but the reason we recommend to not do that is because the risk profile may change from year to year, and therefore you may want to change the plan from year to year. So we only ask for one year at a time.
It's not because you're going to increase the price the next?
No, our contract's locked in. We have an annual budget that we stay within, and so those are the audits that we think we could do inside that, and we'll scope and structure them so that we can make sure and stay on budget.
And how long did it take you to put this all together, more or less?
I don't have the amount of time, but it usually takes us between eighty to a hundred hours to facilitate this from start to finish. And in subsequent years, it's much less. We usually do it in less than twenty, because it's a refresh, and it's not a wholesale refresh of the risk assessment. So all the subsequent years, as we re-look at it and refresh it, we can usually do that in under twenty hours.
And with safety and security being proposed for maybe 2028, I believe that's the year, is that because there's a lower risk? So does that mean that everything's pretty safe, that we don't need to focus in it?
Safety and security was number five on the risk-rated universe.
But on the auditing, doesn't it go to 2028?
We will not audit it until 2028. Again, this is an inherent risk, so I can't tell you that you, I haven't gone in and audited, so I can't tell you that you have a safe environment. We looked at it from an inherent basis. So then we would go in, once we do the audit, then I can tell you if you have, if your controls and your procedures are operating as intended, and then that's the way this is structured. So we start with an inherent basis, not including or thinking about controls, so that then we can give you assurance of what your environment looks like, if you have internal control gaps or internal controls that aren't operating as you expect them to be.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Serrata, another question I have for you is, will we be given a copy of this report?
Yes, Dr. Graham. So we will. And then after every audit, Mr. Graves will come and present to the board the results of that respective audit. He'll provide a synopsis to the cabinet as well, but then it ultimately comes to the board for approval.
Just because it's a lot of information to digest it all at once?
Totally understand, yes. We'll make sure you get a copy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Item 1.7.2, Dr. William Serrata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from El Paso Community College.
Judge Hagerty and members of the board, always a bittersweet moment. While we are happy for our employees that have reached retirement, it's always bittersweet for us. I'm going to acknowledge Ms. Cynthia Cabariti. Cynthia Cabariti began her remarkable journey with El Paso Community College in October 1989. Her return to El Paso that year after living in Jordan for a decade marked the beginning of a career filled with dedication, growth, and heartfelt service to the community college. Her first role was as a seasonal registration clerk at the Rio Grande Campus. She worked under the supervision of Rosa Arroyo and Martha Arvizo. And between registration periods, Ms. Cabariti supported the admissions office part-time. Her work ethic and enthusiasm soon led to new opportunities. One day, Rosa Arroyo introduced her to Ms. Martha de la Fuerte, then Director of Continuing Education for Health. That meeting marked a turning point. She was hired as a part-time clerk, and by October 1996, became a full-time administrative office assistant. In 1998, with the opening of the Mission del Paso campus, Ms. Cabariti transitioned to help staff from Continuing Education Health Office, home to the second EPCC Certified Nursing Program Assistant. Her responsibilities grew to include support for the emergency medical services and licensed vocational nursing programs, eventually resulting in a shared position between Continuing Education and credit health programs under the guidance of Dr. Paula Mitchell. As leadership evolved, Ms. Cabariti now reports to Ms. Cheryl Stiles, Director of CE Health, and Dr. Soraya Hajar, Dean of Health, CTE, Maths, and Science Division. Beyond her daily responsibilities, she has been an active and passionate member of the EPCC community. She served as the Classified Staff Rights and Responsibilities Officer and Vice President of the Classified Staff Association at the Mission del Paso campus. She coordinated the CSA Craft Vendor Fair for many years and is a proud graduate of the EPCC Leadership Academy. For seven years, she co-facilitated the EPCC Staff Retreat alongside Alex Hernandez, Mari Reyes, and Dr. Andrew Peña. Ms. Cabariti also contributed her time and talents to numerous committees, including the Mission del Paso Campus Improvement Team, where she served as secretary, as well as the EMSP and Patient Care Technician Advisory Committees, serving as meeting recorder for both. Reflecting on her time at EPCC, she shares her gratitude for the many meaningful experiences and connections she has made. She considers these relationships a vital part of her extended EPCC family, one she will always treasure and deeply miss. Her favorite quote, fittingly from The Wizard of Oz, beautifully captures her EPCC journey: "It's not where you go, it's who you meet along the way." Ms. Cabariti, on behalf of El Paso Community College, thank you for your years of service, and we wish you the best in your retirement. Please come on.
Item 1.7.3, optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
I just want to say to our new trustee, Ms. Moe, on behalf, as President of the Faculty Association, I want to welcome you to the college and to the Board of Trustees, and look forward to working with you. Congratulations on your victory. And congratulations to our two trustees who emerged victorious in their races.
Thank you.
That's the shortest message.
No, that was quick.
Section 1.8, Communications. Item 1.8.1, Discussion and Review Regarding Data, Statistics, Policies, and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Chair Hagerty and members of the board, I was up this particular meeting to provide the board with a legislative update. However, as Dr. Burnham would agree with me, they're not quite done on some specific bills that I want to ensure that I provide the board with the actual letter of the law. And so I'm going to postpone my presentation until the month of June. Again, I will provide the board with an overview of legislation that was passed that pertains to the college and actions that will be required of us. In particular, SB thirty-seven is one that we're keeping a close eye on. I know Dr. Burnham and his colleagues, as well as those of us in administration, continue to keep an eye on it. But I don't want to misspeak, and so we'll wait till the conference committee finishes its work on SB thirty-seven.
Section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.2, Discussion and Action on the Election of Chair of the Board of Trustees.
I make a motion that we nominate Judge Hagerty as Chair of the Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, Ben.
Ms. Exer.
Oh, of course.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 1.9.3, Discussion and Action on the Election of Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
I make a motion that Ms. Bunny Soriano Najera serve as the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Any discussion? Any other nominations? Call the question, Ben.
I need a second.
Second, right here.
I move that the nomination cease and she be elected by acclamation.
Keep it straight there, Ms. Moe.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 1.9.4, Discussion and Action on the Election of Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we have Dr. Carmen Levas Graham as Secretary of the Board.
I second.
Any discussion? Any other nominees? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
I move that the nomination cease and she be elected by acclamation.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Aye. Well, there was a motion.
But no second.
I'll second the motion.
Mrs. Moe.
I second. See, there's already a motion on the floor, so after, so we'll continue like that, instead of moving the acclamation, because there was already a first and a second.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Items 1.9.5 and 1.9.6 will be discussed after executive session. Section 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurers' Report. No action is required. Item 1.10.1.1, April 30, 2025, Financial Statements. Item 1.10.2, Presidents' Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good afternoon, Chair Hagerty and members of the board. I'd like to begin my report by sharing that Operation College Bound was in full force these past few months, with faculty and staff visiting multiple high schools with every school district in El Paso County. This important outreach effort is an important partnership with UTEP, bringing EPCC's recruitment and student services departments to local high school campuses to help advise on continuing their education and helping them register for the summer and fall semesters. At Operation College Bound, high school students meet with the Admissions Department for course information, new student orientation services, financial aid, first-year experience, counseling, and testing services. Operation College Bound wrapped up on May 3 with Tejano Day at the Trans Mountain Campus. Many thanks to Dr. Amaya, Dr. Leticia Chavez, Mr. Talamantes, Ms. Lopez, and their teams for finishing up Operation College Bound successfully. On May 17, the EPCC Foundation hosted a special luncheon celebrating fifty years of nursing graduates from our Associate Degree in Nursing program. This program began in 1972, and its first class proudly graduated in the 1974-75 academic year. Since then, we have graduated over 6,100 nurses, many of whom continue to shape and strengthen healthcare throughout our region. The luncheon was a celebration of our legacy and forward-looking fundraiser. We welcomed leaders from all of the major healthcare organizations and our higher education partners across the community. Thanks to their generous support, the event raised over $25,000, which will be used to establish the college's first nursing endowment. This endowment will provide scholarships to nursing students for generations to come. I'm happy to share that last month, we had another successful, fully-booked massage-thon. The Health Clinic reported that the event was fully booked by the end of the first day of advertising. It was a great event and experience for our students who worked hard to make this happen. Congratulations to our students and everyone involved. Texas Mutual Insurance, along with Borderplex Workforce Solutions and Texas Tech of El Paso, provided EPCC with a check for $55,000 to secure funding for our medical... Paso, provided EPCC with a check for $55,000 to secure funding for our medical assistant students performing their practicum at Texas Tech clinics. The EPCC Medical Assisting Technology Program will collaborate closely with these partners to continue this great funding opportunity for our students. Marta Garcia, EPCC Certified Medical Assistant Student, gave a heartfelt speech of gratitude for the grant award and was featured on local media on May 6. I would further like to highlight that the Medical Assisting Technology Program concluded the spring semester with a remarkable accomplishment, a 100% pass exam pass rate. All students who sat for the Certified Medical Assistant exam administered by the National Health Career Association on May 2 successfully passed. This outstanding achievement reflects the hard work, dedication, and academic excellence of our students, as well as the unwavering commitment of our faculty and staff, who prepare our students to succeed. Congratulations to all for the great work and student success. The Health Professions and Related Sciences Discipline proudly celebrates the first class of 12 high school students from the Silva Magnet P-Tech Program, who earned their Border Health Issues Certificate on Friday, May 16. As they pursue health careers, these future professionals are better equipped to serve the unique needs of the US-Mexico border region as part of the multidisciplinary healthcare team. Thank you to our EPISD partners for helping make this milestone possible. The Surgical Technology Program is proud to announce that 100% of the Spring 2025 graduates passed their Certified Surgical Technologist exam and 100% pass rate. Additionally, the new cohort of students who made up the first staggered enrollment cohort for the program all passed the two spring semester foundational program courses with exceptional grades. Congratulations to all. Earlier this month, several future EPCC students were honored as recipients of the McDonald's El Paso Scholarship Program. This marks the sixth successful collaboration between EPCC and local McDonald's owner-operator Dr. Richard Castro, whose visionary leadership has established this impactful scholarship initiative, opening doors to higher education for countless El Paso students. In a continued effort to expand educational access and impact, McDonald's El Paso renewed its partnership with both EPCC and UTEP. Through this initiative, McDonald's El Paso awarded $50,000 in scholarships to eligible students planning to attend either institution during the 2025-26 academic year. Thanks to a matching grant from the EPCC Foundation, 11 incoming EPCC students received full tuition scholarships, each covering 12 credit hours per semester for their first year of college. The scholarships totaled $3,264 per student, covering all tuition and fees. Since 2019 and the inception of this partnership with McDonald's El Paso and the EPCC Foundation, 71 incoming students have received scholarships totaling more than $227,000. Congratulations to our students. The EPCC Leadership Academy Class of 2025 recently celebrated 21 years of developing future leaders. The latest session featured leadership and time management insights from notable community figures, including El Paso Mayor Renard Johnson, YWCA CEO Sarika Barlow, Green Hope Project President Candace Prince, Town Square Media's Brad Dubois, and EPCC Veterans Center Mr. Carl Dwyer. EPCC Cabinet Members and I led a half-day session sharing leadership lessons and reinforcing EPCC's commitment to transparency and employee engagement. Participants also attended an El Paso Chihuahua's game, viewed the film Crash, and received crisis management training from emergency management officials. As part of the program, the Class of 2025 meets regularly with institutional leaders through bimonthly accelerated sessions and monthly leadership meetings, with graduation set for June 2025. This initiative underscores EPCC's longstanding commitment to internal leadership development and organizational excellence. The EPCC Chapter of the Texas Association of Chicanos in Higher Education, or TACHA, proudly awarded 2025 student scholarships to Denise Dominguez, Jessica Ramirez, and Angie Jaleen Acuna. Each student receives a $200 scholarship funded entirely through local fundraising by the Student Chapter. This marks the first scholarship distribution since 2014, following a period of declining membership. The Chapter has since experienced a strong resurgence, growing from just four active members during the pandemic to 30 today. EPCC and Far West Texas, Far West TACHA President Gilbert Silva credited the Chapter's success to community involvement and commitment to student support. In addition to scholarships, the Chapter funded travel for three students to attend the TACHA State Conference in Austin. As the first TACHA Student Chapter in Texas, EPCC continues to lead statewide through service, advocacy, and leadership development. Thank you, President Silva, and congratulations to the scholarship recipients. Congratulations Coach Susi, the staff, and the student athletes for concluding a historic and highly successful 2025 season with an overall record of 39 and 19. This year marked a major milestone for the program, showcasing strong growth and competitive performance. Key accomplishments include first-winning overall and WJCAA conference records, along with their first playoff appearance, and the most road wins in a season since 2008; most overall wins in a season since 2003; most conference wins since 2004; and most home victories in program history, and 27 home victories this season. This year's performance marks a remarkable turnaround for the Tejanos, representing a major step forward that reinforces momentum and establishes a solid foundation for long-term athletic success. To conclude my report, I'd like to congratulate the Class of 2025. The Spring 2025 commencement was held on Friday, May 16, with over 2,300 graduates and over 1,700 walking the stage. Congratulations to all our graduates, and our appreciation to the faculty, staff, and administrators who made this happen. Want to thank all of the Board members for attending as well. This concludes my report. I believe that we have a video on commencement as well. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am William Serrata, and I have the privilege of serving as President of El Paso Community College. Welcome to our Spring 2025 El Paso Community College Commencement Exercise. As we celebrate your hard work, I ask that you reflect on the many sacrifices from both you and your families that made today possible.
The theologian Howard Thurman once wrote, quote, "There are few things more devastating than to have it burned into you that you do not count," end quote. Well, Class of 2025, you count. You matter. And how you live your life from this moment forward will help others believe that they matter too. You see, the truth is that deep and lasting change in our communities, in our institutions, in our society, doesn't start with laws or with budgets. It starts with character. It starts with conscience. It starts with you.
Surely want to thank EPCTV for a great job on the video. Chair Hagerty, that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Section 1.11, Consent Docket, there is none. Section 2, Administration, Item 2.1, CAK Local Tasby Revised Policy for First Reading Review and Comment Only, no action is required. Section 3, Personnel, Item 3.1, Information Items, institutionally externally-funded full-time staff and faculty appointments, extensions, resignations, and retirements, no action is required. Item 3.2, Tenured Track Faculty Appointments and New Tenured Faculty.
Move to approve.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer. Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 4, Financial Services, there is none. Section 5, Physical Facilities, there is none. Section 6, Curriculum and Instruction, Item 6.1, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of an Apprenticeship Training Program Grant Amendment from the Texas Workforce Commission, TWC, in the amount of $85,989.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chair Hagerty, I'd like Dr. Smith to acknowledge those that have worked on this, please.
Dr. Serrata and Board, thank you. This is a typical reallocation on our apprenticeship training grant. There's typically a reallocation mid-year based on actual performance, and as you can see, we've increased that dramatically. I'd like to recognize AVP Blaine Primisich, Jose Costa-Lopez, and of course, our Grants Office under the leadership of Bob Elliott. Thank you.
Great job.
Good job, yes, thank you.
Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 6.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Cooperative Agreement Revision from the University of Texas at San Antonio in the amount of $67,627.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? I have a question. What is this word, Exer?
Judge Hagerty, so maybe for the edification of some of our newer Board members as well, we run the Small Business Development Center here in El Paso as part of our cooperative agreement through UT San Antonio. It's funded by a mix of institutional dollars as well as grant funding dollars from UT San Antonio. So their fiscal year doesn't line up necessarily with our fiscal year, and so what you'll see every year is a smaller allocation to get us through, operating through December. We expect another allocation, a larger allocation, before December to extend us through the rest of the academic year. But if you look at the number of clients served, et cetera, on this grant or this board abstract, you see that we have a pretty significant impact on the local economy through our Small Business Development Center. Present in the audience is Audrey Marufo, our current Director of that. So thank you for your efforts there.
Very impressive.
I don't get it. Why San Antonio?
They're just the funder of the large grant that passes through to the other Small Business Development Centers.
So they do the whole state? Does the state give the money to San Antonio?
I want to say it's national, but I will defer to AVP Primisich, if he knows if that's just through the state or if that's national.
I don't get it. Does the state give it to them and the nation's person?
Correct.
They must have a senator or somebody on the board here.
So actually, the state is divided into four main districts, and every district has a lead institution that receives the grant, so it's funded through the Small Business Administration and then to the districts. And so UTSA covers everything from Austin, South and West, and then the other large district is the area around Dallas-Fort Worth, and then the Panhandle and Far East Texas make up the other two.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 6.3, Discussion and Action on the Approval of the Restated and Amended J.M. Hanks Early College High School Inner Local Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is very similar to the others that we've approved for the updating.
Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Abstain with a clarification that this is due to my position at YISD.
Thank you. Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 7, Student Services, Item 7.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for New Courses.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 7.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for Revised Courses.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 8, Community Services, there is none. Would the Board like to go into executive session?
Yes.
Item 1.3, Executive in Closed Session, the Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matters permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item 1.3.1, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding Negotiation of Ground Lease Agreement with Ganoteo ISD Regarding EPCC Northwest Campus pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Item 1.3.2, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding Proposed Amendment to Board Resolution for the Student Success Endowment Fund pursuant to Section 551.073 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 5:52 PM, and the Board is in executive session. We're back in session?
Okay, we're back in general session. Read 1.9.6.
I will read 1.9.5.
Oh, hell, yeah, that'll be.
1.9.5, Discussion and Action to Approve the First Amended and Restated Resolution for the Student Success Endowment Fund.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve it as it was discussed in an executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Najera.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moe.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
And on 1.9.6, there's no action needed. And our next Board meeting is coming. And our next board meeting is going to be in this room on June 25 at 4:30. So if you'd like to attend, mark your calendars. And we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.